Thank you. But please keep your rise for one more second. We're passing it Chief Lee Callahan last week, so we'd like to take a moment of that. I just remember so long. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, there you go. Disability Access Committee Transfer of Funds, Mr. Segurino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Chris Hanafin, Veterans Services Director, who also manages the Disability Access Commission here, for a request for the board.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you that have been here for a little while, Operation Access isn't necessarily something that's foreign, but it's something that we haven't done in a number of years, probably since COVID. To give you a quick background of it, it started before my time, probably 2013, 2014. Burlington was kind of a frontrunner with the state, Burlington and Waltham, in regards to this program. And the program was designed to have handicap parking fine fund money pay for police details to solely write handicap parking tickets at certain times during the year. It generally happened around the holidays, and in the past, it was done around the mall. And it was a very lucrative fund, if you will, for the disability access, particularly bringing money into that handicap parking fine fund. It was paying for itself three or four times over. You know, then COVID kind of hit, and it wasn't as lucrative. And I can say, in the last, probably about a year and a half, Sergeant Abascaloon, particularly the Traffic Division for the Burlington Police Officers, have done an amazing job in enforcing handicap parking fines. We kind of looked at a lull in tickets being written as maybe one of those, maybe people are smart now, maybe there isn't as many violations. That is proven significantly wrong, especially with Grubhub and other services where people think, hey, I can park there real quick, run in, do what I need to do, and then leave. Tickets are being written at an astronomical rate. So we figured this might be a good opportunity to reintroduce Operation Access. And so what we're looking to do, the Disability Access Commission is looking to fund $5,000 out of the handicap parking fine fund to go towards police details, to go in high-traffic areas, whether or not that's around the 3rd and 2nd Ave areas or the mall, to enforce handicap parking.
Okay. We'll start with Rachel. Questions? Oh, sorry. I'm looking at her, sorry. Sarah, I apologize. That's, whatever.
Thanks for coming, Chris.
Sure.
For your help with this. So it is $5,000?
Yes.
Okay. Exactly what, so that would go to police detail?
That's correct.
Does that cover, like, a certain number of hours, or?
So in the past, we've written it as $5,000 on specific times, whether or not that was like a Thursday through a Sunday. And we found that it wasn't necessarily something that the police department could really handle, and it was being extended for a number of months because we have other details elsewhere. And at least talking to Sergeant Abascaloon, he was saying that it might be easier to fill those details if it wasn't so time stringent. So we thought, let's just put a monetary value on it, and then as soon as you hit that cap, we would readdress, hey, was the $5,000 worth it? It's kind of a new pilot program, if you will. If it is, it's something that we're looking to continue to do. If it's something that, you know, we're just kind of breaking even, maybe we don't continue to do it.
And these funds are coming from funds that we already have in the commission, the Disability Access?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. I fully support this. I think it's a great resource, I guess, in a way. If you could look at it like that, if people are working the law, but we're, in a way, benefiting from that.
Right.
So I appreciate your efforts with this. I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chris, for joining us tonight. As the liaison to DAC, I'm fully aware of the discussion, was part of it, and I'm in full support of this. Nothing annoys me more walking into a store and seeing someone illegally taking one of those handicap spots. And we designate those spots for a reason. We make sure it's in our bylaws, we have a certain amount for a reason, and they go to people who really need them. And I think enforcing this is a good thing, and I'm full support. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To give my ignorance, what's it coming, five, is it 500 or 250?
No, so right now, it's $200. But I came to you a few months ago to increase it to $300, which you did approve under the condition that we had just ordered like 1,000 tickets that had $200 on it. So we weren't actually going to increase that number until we got the new tickets in. We didn't want to waste the money on the tickets that we had already purchased. And it wouldn't necessarily look good that the police is kind of crossing out 200 on it and writing 300. So we were going to wait until those tickets that we had already ordered would diminish, and then we're going to order new ones that said $300 on it.
That makes sense. So again, it's one of those necessary evils, because as the other select board member said, it's needed, those spaces are needed, because people have those impairments and disabilities. One in my own family. But I don't like looking at it as a profit-making way, but my point being is, if an officer writes two tickets, which I'm sure they're going to get definitely more, it's going to more than compensate their time.
Right.
So if you write two tickets, it's profit, but it's not business profit. It's offsetting the cost of the detail or the overtime.
Right.
Absolutely in support of this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, nothing, I mean, I shouldn't say nothing, but just about nothing else irritates me more than people who occupy handicap spots who don't need to be. Right? I mean, I won't bore this board with my thoughts. We've talked about it. I am in full support of this, you know, especially if we can possibly target smaller parking lots where we have food establishments, I think, but like maybe like Bagel Bar, right, where it's a tight spot, you've got those Grubhub things kind of jumping in, jumping out. You know, people need to get, you know, to where they want to go, and we shouldn't be hindering, people shouldn't be hindering those handicap spots. But yeah, I'm in full support. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah, I mean, how could you not be in support of this? We do have the chief here. Would the chief like to make a comment on this at all? Or would you like to just let it go on?
The only comment I'll make is that we can work around the hours.
Okay.
Certainly, there's enough officers who are willing to do this, and we can meet challenge.
Great, thank you, chief. Appreciate that. Okay, pretty much in favor, so I need to...
Make a motion to approve the transfer of funds for the Disabilities Access Committee.
Motion made?
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, Chris. Chris, if you could just give us an update on that later on, like a couple months from now, see how it goes. All right? Be great, thank you. Moving right along.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask if John can make an announcement about the internet, potential disruption this evening?
Sure, you can.
So we're having intermittent losing internet. So IT is working on it, and they're going to have to reboot our core switch, but they'll wait till after the meeting. It doesn't seem like we've lost connection to the WebEx, and I see someone from outside the meeting is logged in. But just in case anybody that's watching or trying to log in has an issue, just keep trying to log in.
Dan, I don't want to read the text on the agenda, but this is a live, in-person meeting, and the virtual component is provided as a convenience to the public. But if the technology were to go down, the meeting will continue.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, appointments, police department. Chief?
Good evening. So I have three requests for appointments tonight. Two are recently retired, full-time officers. You'll notice none of the officers are here tonight. The two that have recently retired are just too humble. They don't want to, they didn't want any fanfare on their way out the door. The first one is an appointment to the position of Special Police Officer for Officer Harry Sawyer. I'm sure most of you, if not all, everybody knows Harry dedicated 37 years of service to the department and retired on January 3rd. He was appointed full-time to the department back in March 28th of 1988. He's been our Senior Patrol Officer since January of 2021. He was assigned to the NEMLEC RRT Regional Response Team in 1990, and then was a SWAT Team member from 1991 through 2011. The vacuum in his experience will be felt for years to come. He brought a lot of stability to the day shift, never shied away from any of these hot calls, and he certainly will be missed. But like I said, he kind of snuck in under the radar and left a couple of days early so that we couldn't recognize him. I have a platform in my office, but based on his years of service and his experience, I would respectfully request that he be appointed tonight as a Special Police Officer.
With the chief's recommendation, I requested the board, I request to appoint Harry Sawyer to the position of Special Police Officer in the Burlington Police Department, and ask the board to waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
So moved in second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Good thing he's not here, because I would assume, he's a fantastic person.
I'm sure you'll see him out there on detail.
Oh, I will.
The next appointment is for Detective Keith Shepherd, who actually officially retires tomorrow. Detective Shepherd was appointed back in October of 1998. He's done about 26 and 1/2 years full-time service. Most of that was in the schools. He was appointed as a DARE officer back in September of 2004. After Chief Kent came in, he was appointed to a new position of Transitional Community Services Officer in 2012. And from there, he went on to be the Scheduling Officer, as Select Board Member Tigas is well aware of the duties there. He was appointed to that position in January of 2015. And then he went on to be the School Resource Officer at the Marshall Simons Middle School back in October of 16. And his absence was felt there when he was reassigned to the high school as Detective Youth Services back in November of 2020. So again, his years of experience and what he was able to do within the school system, certainly, we're trying to make up for that vacuum and experience. But in recognition of his years of service, I would respectfully request that he be appointed as a Special Police Officer effective this Wednesday.
Thank you, chief. With the chief's recommendation, I wish to appoint Keith Shepherd to the position of Special Police Officer, and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
So moved in second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. And that's another one. You know, I'll tell you, to be honest with you, it's tough losing two guys like that at the same time, especially, you know, coming from the background, both their fathers were police officers here in town, and they both, you know, have passed since. Both of them worked to enjoy life, and they've done a great job for this town. So I wish them both all the best, and I know I will see them around town. So I don't know how you're going to fill those voids.
Well, we're going to do our best. We've got to keep moving forward.
Yes, you are.
So the final one is a full-time officer appointment to try to make up for some of this, the loss in these senior people, and we are still down a few. But I'd like to bring James Dawson. James is currently, or just recently, was a New Jersey State Trooper. He was on the New Jersey State Police from March 17th through 2021. He has a Bachelor's of Science in Psychology from Salve Regina in Newport, Rhode Island, where he met his current wife. His wife is originally from Marblehead, Massachusetts, so the deal there, from what I understand, was as soon as she could get back to employment up here in Massachusetts, they were going to move. That's in fact what they did. James is also a member of the New Jersey National Guard as an infantry platoon leader. He's also a volunteer assistant football coach. As I said, he is married with two young children. He'll be living in Marblehead, at least in the short term, and we'll be bringing him on as of next Monday. So I'd ask for his appointments.
Thank you, chief. With the chief's recommendation, I wish to appoint James Dawson to the position of Patrolman in the Burlington Police Department, and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
So moved in second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Congratulations, chief.
Thank you. And at some point, I will bring him before the board to introduce him. He wasn't able to be here because he's in the process of moving, but I would like him to get in here as an introduction, probably after he's sworn in.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay, approval, early voting, vote by mail, annual town election. Yeah, I didn't want to do that one.
I didn't want to do that one.
Rachel said she was in a hurry. I was going to go over there. Mill Pond Treatment Plant. Yes, Rachel. It was her last one. I wanted to...
Hello. All right, so I left EPW in April, had a big project that I felt bad pushing onto Brian or my replacement, so I said I'd keep it, and the funds were transferred today, which is very convenient. So this is my last hurrah from Public Works. January 2023, we got a grant from DEP to do improvements to the Mill Pond Treatment Plant, which on the town side is the largest energy producer. So we went forward with weatherization, which we did a lot of window sealing, and we also did a solar array on the roof, first town-side solar array. Schools already have, I think, middle school and high school each have their own. So total project cost, just shy of $200,000. Total cost of the town, about $20,000, 10%-ish. Got some good incentives from Eversource, who's our energy provider, and the total grant award was about $176,000. The array went on November 25th, both front-end and back-end. The utility companies usually take a while to approve everything, get the incentives, and then come and do the final inspections. So we were really excited when we finally got to turn it on. And so projected savings, they're saying about $18,000 a year, which I believe Brandon did the math, and that equates to covering the cost of both cemetery buildings, which is pretty good. Electricity savings, that's about 87,000 kilowatt-hours. And the intention was to offset the cost to Mill Pond, but in general, it's just to offset the cost of all of our occupancy. And it was the best spot for an array that we currently have. It gets plenty of sun, it's a big roof. I'm sure there's more projects down the road we can do at both One and 10 Great Meadows, so.
Thank you. Jimmy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, this is great news, to hear that it's up and running. I know as someone who has solar, it's a big energy saver, it's a big money saver. The mere fact that, I think it's going to cost us $19,500, and annually, we're going to save $18,400. I mean, how can you say no to that? I mean, annually, that is only going to go up. And then it looks like we might be eligible for another, the SMART grant as well?
I guess, it comes in as like a tax revenue. This helps us with like a bunch of different tax credits as well, as you probably know on your own tax bill, so.
So it's a win-win-win for town residents, for the economy, for everything. So I'm definitely in favor of it. Well, we're not voting on it, but just glad to hear we're up here.
Hold on a sec.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rachel, this is fantastic. I won't, again, I won't belabor any points. I think it's wonderful that we got this up. I look forward to future projects where we can, you know, continue to offset our costs and, you know, use natural resources to, you know, our benefit. You know, I appreciate all the, all the work that you and everybody else, really, that, you know, goes into a project like this, getting it done. So thank you very, very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, echoing what fellow board members said, thank you very much for all the hard work on this, and especially for getting the grants to pay for this. It's awesome. And anytime we can use, you know, solar energy, it's nothing but a good thing. So thank you for your hard work, and good luck with everything coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Rachel, for your work on this and Brian. I know this was kind of the last piece of the puzzle for all the work that went into the Mill Pond Water Treatment Facility. And I just really appreciate the creative cost savings and looking into these kind of grant opportunities to help offset costs for the average taxpayer in town. I think our town is really good at looking for those opportunities, or just encourage everybody to keep doing that. I don't know that it's always fully recognized or appreciated by the average taxpayer, but we definitely recognize and appreciate it. So thank you so much. And yeah, on the note, we have other opportunities for this kind of thing coming down the line. So I'd love to see, see more of this, but this was, this was huge. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We say, everyone's already said it, I can't say anything else. Thank you so much. Brian, you're doing a great job sitting there. You look great. Thank you very much. Can I say, thank you. Thank you for the update. Thank you for saving the town money again. All right?
Happy to do it. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, Amy, we'll do. Early voting approvals. Mr. Segurino, anything?
We have a town clerk here to ask for some approvals for the upcoming town election.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ben Oderer, and I mean, and Paul. Yes, so for the town election on April 5th, I need to get approval from the Select Board or just a vote regarding that we will have both early voting and vote by mail available for that election. The vote by mail applications went out with the census forms. We tend to double that up when it's a town-election-only year, and we've gotten almost 1,000 of them back already. So people really do like and appreciate the vote by mail. And then we'll start early voting in person will be around the 19th of March, which is 17 days before the election is when we can start it. So I just need a vote on that, or any questions?
Mike, we'll start with you.
No, no questions, Mr. Chair?
Just one question. So early voting for a town election takes place in the clerk's office, is that correct? Or will you have something?
We will have it upstairs here.
You will have it something up here?
I'm going to reserve up here, because we just never know how busy it will be. And so I'm planning to just vote, to reserve up here to have it as a backup. That way, we can also, on the last couple of days, when we do the advanced processing, we can use the hearing room for that as well.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Amy, it's great to hear that 1,000 people have already put in for it. In the last few elections, has it been growing or steady, or like how has the overall turnout been?
Well, it's kind of hard to say. I would say it's probably been pretty steady. Last year, of course, with presidential election is always a bubble. It never tracks based on any of the other previous years. And, and I mean, our vote by mail obviously was down from 2020 because that was COVID. And so everybody felt they couldn't go, so they all signed up for vote by mail. So I mean, I think it's tracking, it will probably still be around 50% of the turnout will be either vote by mail or early in-person voting.
Yeah.
I think that seems to be the trend that we're following.
Okay. And that's a lot, 50% of the turnout. Well, I know this board appreciates, I appreciate you doing it every year. I think what was in the backup, you know, the consistency of it's important, so I'm in full support, but thank you.
It just makes sense to do it, because it's, it's the teaching them, teaching the voter the pattern.
Right.
So that they can do that. It's not like one year it's not, one year it is, what do I do? You know, those types of things.
Definitely. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amy, thank you again for all you do and your staff. We're giving residents a chance to vote by mail, in-person, and early voting. So I don't know how much more we can do to give opportunities to vote, so hopefully they'll take advantage of one of the three ways of, methods of voting, and hopefully we'll have, you know, a good turnout or a good percentage of voters. Absolutely in favor of this, and I think it's a great, great option, great options.
Thank you. Yeah, what can we say? I mean, it's all right there for us. I can't see any reason not to have this go through. And once again, we're just happy you're still here doing this for us right now. So on that, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve early voting and voting by mail for the annual town election.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Segurino, go ahead.
Amy's here for the next one.
I know. Okay, town clerk. Planning. What was yours, Amy?
Okay, I will start by Lynn, if you can pass them out. I'm taking this opportunity to notify you all that I am announcing my retirement, which will be effective April 30th, 2025. The, through many discussions and thoughts, my feeling is probably the best, was the best thing to do it now, so that you all can then notify me. And our next steps would be to put it on the ballot for the April 5th election. That would give people a chance to, if someone does want to run, to take out papers and that. It also gives the town a chance, I think the best chance, to have at least somebody elected to the position for the one year remaining on the term. And that gives everyone a little more chance, a little more time to figure out what is going to happen, because the other thing that's going to be on the ballot is the question about whether the position should be converted from elected to appointed. So this just kind of fits better with everything. So there's my letter, kind of spelling everything out. Like I said in the letter, I mean, it's been one of the best experiences of my life. I've enjoyed working here. I've enjoyed all the collaborative work that we've done. It's a great town to live in. We moved in in '83, so it's been a great town to live in and work in and just be part of. So I greatly appreciate that opportunity. So I do need to have a vote from you all today, realizing that we need to then, it's one of those, you have to notify me, that I have to then put it on the ballot for April 5th.
Before everyone gets started, Amy, we didn't put vote for approval on the agenda, so we can tidy up at the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, we have to do it by, by January 31st. So you guys have a meeting on the 27th?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, that...
I just want to make sure that the agenda doesn't ask completed approval expected on this item, so.
Yeah. So if that can be put on for next meeting, that would be very good, beneficial.
Okay. There's so many things that you want to say, but...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amy, you will be missed by the residents, by this board, but I'll keep it brief, because I know that everybody wants to, you know, say that what they want to say. I'll ask you a question. Once you retire, what town office are you going to run for? I should say, now you can run for office.
Now they can run for office? I don't know. I think it's time to let some other people have a chance.
Just saying that in jest, but...
Yeah, good, yeah.
Congratulations, Amy.
Well, thank you.
It's well-deserved.
Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Amy. Yeah, like Jim said, we'll be very sad to see you go, but understand, and, you know, retirement and rest is well-deserved. I just want to say a personal thank you, just, I mean, we say thank you from the town, but also personally, you know, during my time on town meeting, or running for town meeting, and then running for Select Board, you were just a huge asset. At any time throughout that, when somebody would come to me and say, thinking about running for this, and I'd say, go talk to Amy. She's just a wealth of knowledge. You just have, you know, personal knowledge, and then, you know, knowledge on the resources and everything, so... So, just on a personal note, you've been a huge help for me, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. That's very kind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, retirement's a funny thing. We've talked about the whole notion of seasons, right? And I feel like my time on the board has been marked with more retirements.
Oh, it's new.
It's my fault, Amy.
Scaring them all off.
Shutting this place down. No, you know, it's an interesting time, right? That the town is just going through a big transition, right? Where folks who've been here for a very long time have marked that time and are taking a step back, right, through, for a variety of reasons. And, you know, I don't know that the people of the community really understand the impact that you've had in your role, in your time here. I really don't. I'm not sure that I fully grasp it, and I appreciate you more than, you know, the stars in the friggin' sky, Amy. I mean, you know, to Sarah's point, you've always been an ear to bend, you know, and a voice of neutral reason, you know. But it is nothing short of well deserved, and I can't thank you enough, you know, on behalf of the community, on behalf of the board, on behalf of myself, for everything that you've done for this community. So, I mean, truly, from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Well, thank you. That's a very humbling thing. I'll have to behave myself for the next 100 days.
Don't make me regret those words.
Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Amy, thank you for 19 years of service. And like Sarah said, thank you on a personal level for all of your help you've given me in all my elections, town meeting, planning, and then Select Board. Burlington's been very lucky to have you for 19 years and even, you've always had a great town clerk with my old neighbor Jane Schu before that, and you just took the ball and ran with it and continued with doing so much for this town. So, we owe you a huge debt of gratitude. This is very bittersweet for all of us, and we wish you nothing but the best and all of your future endeavors well deserved. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, so a question for Mr. Sagarino. We can vote this down, right, on the 27th?
It doesn't mean she has to stay.
So, we'll see what happens on the vote. Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everybody. Amy, I just don't know even where to start or how to say anything at all because I've been involved in the politics for over 20 years now in town, and you were the assistant clerk when Jane was doing it, and then she left and you took over. And I feel like we've been through this a lot together, whether it was my town meeting seat, my ZBA seat or whatever. But I'm going to tell you a quick thing that I'll never ever forget and I'll never be able to say thank you for, naturally, the town stuff, but the day you let me and my dad get sworn in up here, 90-year-old guy with Alzheimer's that had no idea what was going on, but he just sat and he took a great picture for me, and I still have it in my office. So, just that alone tells me what kind of person you are to allow that to happen. The stuff that you've done for this town, the acclamations on this paper, don't even count everything you've done. You walked into this town and your head is held higher than anybody else because of everything you've done and all the residents that you deal with, always with charm, charisma, and a personality that's outstanding, except for when someone puts their stuff over that little line down at town meeting down there, except for that particular, but other than that, everything else is great. I can't thank you enough for everything. I will truly miss you, but you're still being town. So, thank you for everything. And you're not going until after this election's over. Yes?
Joe, well, where do I begin? I think the town is really going to understand how important Amy was when we lose her. She has gone far beyond the role of town clerk, and she's taken on a million different projects here in town. She's one of the hottest working people that I've ever worked with. As a result of this job, I'm here at a lot of odd hours, weekends, and evenings, and oftentimes, I'll be in my office, hear a funny noise, and at first, it used to freak me out because I think you're in the building alone, but oftentimes, it was just Amy also showing up on a Sunday to put some extra work in. And she's gone above and beyond on managing the technology function at our town meetings. She manages our website. She's instrumental in instituting software for our development departments over at the town hall annex. And, you know, what I always remember is during COVID, when every other town hall was closed and we were here, and I would often look out my window, and Amy would be running out in practically a hazmat suit to marry some folks that could not get married anywhere else because everywhere else was closed. And she was here every single day with us during the pandemic, doing that when every other town was closed. So, I have a lot more to say. She yells at us a lot, but always comes back the next day and apologizes. So, she is going to...
I am a redhead.
Very deeply missed, and I think that, you know, we haven't even began to untangle all the things that she was doing for the town above and beyond her role as a town clerk. So, we're going to have to sort that all out over the next few months, and thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you all very much.
Sean?
Kind words. It's very... I don't want to repeat everything everyone said. You know, Paul nailed it, though. It's all the little things Amy does. She gets an executive producer award for town meeting every time, helping with the website and developmental services and stuff. But more importantly, she's, and I've worked at five places, so I've worked with lots of town and city clerks, and Amy's right there at the top of it. I tell her that all the time. She probably hates hearing it. But she's quick with a joke when you need it, and she's quick with a smack when you need it. So, we're really going to miss her for those reasons to come up, close my door, tell me what I did wrong, then make me feel better about it after. So, we're going to miss that.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Lynn?
Very much.
She knows I don't want her to go. All the stuff that we work together on, I don't know how someone's going to deal with it with me. So, she knows.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's very humbling. I do it because I like to do it and I can do it, and it's just been my honor and pleasure to work with all of you and to work for the town, so. And I still have 107 more days.
Amy, while you're here, would you mind just giving the public sort of some of the deadlines if, hopefully, there's somebody watching who may be interested in running
Sure.
For the one-year term?
Yeah. So, basically, as soon as I get notified by the Board of Selectmen that they are going to put it on the ballot, then that people can come in, take out papers. So, that's the only caveat with not voting on it until next meeting, but we can do it. The deadline would be, pickup papers would be February 12th, and then they would return them by February 14th. They need to get 50 signatures townwide since it's a townwide position, which all of you understand that many signatures and with the right kind of being in the right places, it's pretty straightforward to do. So, I think that will be. And then, once those signatures are certified, which usually just takes us a couple of days, then that person's name would go on the ballot and would appear on April 5th to be voted on. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I forgot, it's Paul. Paul, is there any way for us to vote tonight and affirm it on the 27th?
I'd be fine with that.
I only ask because I feel like if someone's interested, and we only affirm it on the 27th, that gives them that much less time, two weeks less time...
Yeah.
To think about it, go collect signatures, right? And I mean, 50 isn't the worst thing to go collect. But I mean, you know, when you're getting things going, it can be a bit of a bear.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, I don't know if...
I'm in favor of that.
...it was open to that. But as somebody who's collected 50 signatures for a few goes, it can be tough sometimes.
Well, it does also give them the option to participate at town meeting with getting people to sign the numbers, too, so.
Absolutely.
Paul, real quick, it says update, but we can vote on it. That's not going to change anything.
Yeah, it would really be only an issue if somebody made an issue of it.
Okay.
It's not, I don't think it would be your opinion, Amy?
Yeah, I don't think it would be a huge problem in that it was part of the item anyway, so...
Yeah, I mean, we like, when the board's going to vote on something, we like to list that on the agenda. That's the, you know, more of an internal office.
Yeah.
On that note, I will take a motion. Yes. Oh, you look like you were going to tell me I was doing something wrong.
No, I can't, but...
No question in my mind you could. And then Amy's right there to confirm it. Get me while you can. So, is there a motion?
Can I ask, is the motion to put the town clerk role on the ballot for April 5th? Is that what the motion is?
Yeah, for the one-year term that's remaining.
Okay. So, I will make a motion to put the role of town clerk on the April 5th town ballot for the one-year term.
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. There you go. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
So, Amy, can somebody come tomorrow and pick up paper?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as I can have a, and Lynn will get me a vote, you know, written.
I don't know. I don't have anybody in mind. I'm just asking.
Yeah. As long as I have in my hand something that says you guys, plus I have it on video if somebody questioned it, that yes, we were all in agreement that it would go on the ballot. That's fine.
All right. I wish thinking you were very excited, like you were going to rush down there and vote in.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
All right. Approval, Victorina's Pizza Works, 222 Cambridge Street. Would you like to come up front? Have a seat?
Good timing.
Yeah, perfect timing.
Good evening, everybody.
Paul, any comments or just anything for us?
A new Victorina's license.
Okay.
Board needs to approve.
So, if you could just sign the paper and introduce yourself and tell us what the game plan is, and we'll go from there.
The address of the pizza shop address or our home address? The pizza shop? Well, while he's doing that, I'll introduce myself. I'm Felicia DeLalio, and I'm very excited about our new business. And I've been, we've been doing this a long time. I have a business in Revia. I have a coffee shop, a specialty coffee shop, and I have a diner in Somerville. I've been there 17 years. So, I, you know, I enjoy cooking. I enjoy serving. I love to talk to people.
And me, I've been in the pizza business. I gave it up in 2017. I used to have a place in Belenica. I got tired of working nights and being away from the kids, and now I got tired of missing pizza. I wanted to get back into the business.
And the kids are older now, so...
Lynn, is all the paperwork in order and everything good? No? Yeah, maybe?
No. They're still waiting on the workman's comp.
I have all that. I was going to drop it off.
Okay.
Tomorrow?
All right, then, yes.
Okay.
I got everything. The only thing I'm waiting on is my liability. He's supposed to, he was supposed to have it for me today, but I guess the man on 113 Cambridge Street? But I do have all the information on the workman's comp. I have it in the...
You're going to approve a contingent upon receiving insurance?
I have everything filled out. I have the paperwork and the comp.
No, no.
I'll drop it off when I get the liability policy.
Yeah, that's fine.
Now, a quick question. Do I need to, I need to give you the business certificate?
No, they can take care of that downstairs.
So, you're taking over for Pizza Works?
Yes, Pizza Works, yes.
I'm going to ask the board if they have any questions for you first, and then we'll go from that.
Sure.
We'll start with Mike.
No, I just welcomed you to Burlington and you're taking on an institution that Kenny did a great job for 17 years.
Yes, Kenny is going to be a hard shoes to fill, but he, we've been in training, my son and my good friend who's going to run it. I'll be there in the evenings because I have to run my coffee shop, but they're well-trained. Kenny taught them all the recipes. When something's not broken, you don't fix it. The only thing I am going to do a little bit different is I'm going to make my own dough from scratch. Kenny gets his dough from Dough Connection, and I want to, I'm a hands-on guy. I want to be able to have control of things, so I want to make my own dough and take it from there.
Kenny, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Nick?
No questions. I agree with what Mike said. Best luck to both of you in the business.
It is a great community. It really is.
No questions. Same. Best of luck and welcome to Burlington.
Thank you.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad you mentioned the great community because Kenny and Pizza Works is part of this community. You have been for years. Very, very generous to the town, to the residents. I just hope that you carry on all the traditions and...
Yes, Ken told me he gives the police and a lot of people 20% discount. We're going to continue that because I believe in the police, in the community and all that. So, I'm going to keep up, I'm going to keep up all the traditions that Kenny does. And if you guys ever need, you know, anything fundraisers, anything like that, feel free to call. I'll help you out as much as I can.
Yeah, Kenny's been part of this town for, he's worked as a part of this town, and we just want to welcome to the town and wish you luck. Wish you good luck.
Yeah, in the future, I would like to buy a home here. We live in Memphis right now, but in the future, I would love to buy a home in Burlington.
Tony has family here, too. We have his sister and my niece's nephews that live in Burlington, so...
I'd like to say I had the pleasure of meeting the couple last week. I was at Ken's, and I met the two of yous last week, and it was a pleasure. I wish you all the best.
Thank you very much.
We're going to make a motion. We make that motion, put the contingency in there that Lynn will get the paperwork and go from there. So, whoever would like to make the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve a new Victorina's license, the Pizza Works 222 Cambridge Street, contingent upon receiving the information, insurance information, certificates.
Second.
Motion made second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained, opposed, 5-0-0.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Good luck. Welcome to Burlington.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We'll be all standing.
It'll be a pleasure.
All right. Thank you. Have a good night.
You have a good night.
Public hearing coming up. We're good to go?
Yep.
Public hearing for Chau. Where is it? I lost the paperwork. There it is. 75 Mill 6th, change of ownership. So, I'm opening the public hearing. No motion is needed.
Chairman, make a motion to accept the advertisement as written?
Second.
Motion made second. Accept the advertisement as written. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stained, opposed, 5-0-0. Discussion. Discussion, any discussion on this at all? This is a change of ownership, Mr. Seigurino, any comments?
No comments, all the paperwork appears to be in order from our end. Petitioners in the virtual meeting, if board wants to just get an update about specifically what's going on with ownership.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. I'm Attorney Gene Richard, representing the applicant in licensee Fogo de Show. The changes to the ownership and the stock interest, in ultimate stock interest in the licensee, all relate to a transaction between two private equity firms. Bain Capital Private Equity purchased all the Fogo de Show restaurants throughout the country and even internationally from Roan capital. So Bain Capital Private Equity is now the ultimate owner of approximately 60 Fogo restaurants, and that includes the Burlington restaurant. So details of the transactions are in the application, and particularly in abider request, beneficial interest disclosure exemption request, and some accompanying exhibits to that. But for today's purposes, I would stress to you that the operational control of the Burlington and all the Fogo's licensees remain unchanged. And as the LLC's managers, who are basically the, and have been for quite some time, the operational managers of the overall Fogo organization. So I think it's fair to say that customers won't notice and have not noticed any difference to the restaurant in Burlington or elsewhere, really, after the transaction. And basically, the day-to-day operation simply hasn't changed. So accordingly, pending any, any questions from the board, we respectfully request approval for the Fogo change of ownership and/or change of stock ownership.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let me just ask, any questions from anybody? Nothing? No one has any questions, okay. Is anybody in the public have a question about this? Anybody online that we can, if we are online? And there's nobody in the room that has a question about this? Okay, so I'll look for.
Make a motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion made second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0-0. Any other comments on this, or would you like to just vote on it at this point?
I'll make a motion that we approve the change of ownership interest and issuance and transfer of stock, new stock. Fogo de Show, six turnpike.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, citizens' time. Anybody in the room? Here we go. Mr. Hartling, how are you, sir?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, you look much younger from this side of the table, I have to tell you. I appreciate the time, I promise to keep it brief. My name is Chris Hartling, I live at One Colleen Circle, lived in Burlington for 50-plus years. Here as a taxpayer, with, with some perspective, and to respectfully express, you know, some of the things that I hope you folks look at, specifically with the cannabis article, that's going to be talked about at town meeting. Kind of an emotional subject. I have some knowledge above and, for a change, above and beyond what, what, what a lot of people have. And I respect that there are a ton of different opinions as to how this should go. I have a first cousin that's in the industry, kind of a pioneer. He's had a shop on Newbury Street for 30-plus years, he has a grow facility, he operates three retail sites. He's been on my back about this for years in Burlington. I remember when the town was approached by the folks looking to put a medical spot here, I was in support of the moratorium when it got passed. I've raised kids here. I, I come at this from a lot of different angles, and where I've kind of landed is, is where I think a lot of other people have landed as well, and will see at town meeting. I supported the moratorium when it was proposed, sort of as a wait-and-see measure. The idea at that time was the state, it had just passed, the state was kind of up in the air about regulations and where they were going to go, and they've definitely gone through some growing pains. They've made some mistakes, and hopefully they're on a good track in terms of how they regulate things. So where the moratorium was a wait-and-see, I think we've waited and we've seen, and where we are now, and I'm not going to get too much into what you're probably going to hear going forward, I don't know if you guys are taking, if you folks are taking a permission, a position on this, I hope that you are, but we've waited, we've seen. I, I did some research on my own with this, it sounds like there are more communities in Burlington that allow sale of recreational than there are that aren't. I had the same questions a lot of my friends and neighbors had. I obtained some public records, some police logs from some of the towns that neighbor us, Woburn, Billerica, Arlington, I contacted Drakeett, I contacted Tingsborough. Drakeett and Tingsborough border New Hampshire, where recreational is not legal, where they get a lot of sales because of that. I just wanted to know what the real numbers are and what the real impacts are on those towns. What I found from a, from the perspective of what kind of activity they have, very few quote-unquote "issues" when I looked at police logs, directed patrols and false alarms are the majority of the kinds of calls that they get at those places. So, you know, that, that's easily obtainable information for anybody that wants to do some research as to the impact these kinds of things can have on services. Oracle, I think I, I've been attending some of the meetings for the zoning article that we're going to be talking about. Oracle's looking to lease 400,000 square feet of space. The town's economic development director, the planning board, they're taking steps to sort of account for and make up for revenue that we've been losing as taxpayers, specifically since COVID, but, you know, I don't, I don't have to belabor that point. In the last couple of years, or in the last year, I think specifically, and I may be a little off, but I think town meeting supported 45 million for a new police station.
I'm going to hold you up for a second.
Yeah.
We give everybody three minutes?
Okay.
We've gone over that, only because you perform a sitting this cheap.
Okay.
So if you could just wrap it up quick?
Absolutely.
All right?
Yep, no, and honestly, my only, what I'm trying to lead to is the fact that I believe that this is no different than the meals and the hotel tax that we passed. And as a taxpayer, I'm hoping that you guys support it, I'm hoping that it passes. To me, we can't afford not to collect it, we get 3% of gross, and then an agreement is negotiated on top of that to help fund different services in town. So I just hope, I know you folks will, I just hope that everybody kind of does their homework as, as far as, you know, what kind of an impact this will have on the town.
Fantastic.
And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
We appreciate it, Chris.
Thanks for the time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Is there anybody else for citizens' time? There's nobody online? No? Okay. All right, moving along. Discussion, January town meeting, Article 17. Will, I'm assuming that's why you're here tonight?
That is.
Okay, you have four minutes.
Four minutes? Okay. I did, okay, great. So this is really what the discussion will be about at town meeting, which is, are we going to be repealing the prohibition on adult-use marijuana establishments? I think that if we can determine that we are okay conceptually with doing that, then we can figure out the where, the why, and, or the how to best do that for Burlington. And so if you could go to the next slide, please, Lynn, or John? So this is the data on who exactly has dispensaries. I think that was hopefully helpful to you all and everybody in town to realize that we're actually in the minority of towns and cities that do not have this. Almost 70% of the rest of the state has or allows dispensaries. And closest to us right now, we have Woburn, that's about four miles away from where we are right now, Billerica is eight miles away, and then all of those other towns you can see under that, who are directly near us who also have or allow dispensaries. And so the conversation, I think, and I hope people realize, my point is that it's here, it's legal, it's available, it's in Burlington, it's just not legally sold in Burlington. And so the only thing we're really doing is not collecting the tax revenue from it, in my eyes, and I think that's a big mistake. Obviously, we heard that Oracle is downsizing, a lot of other businesses in town are downsizing, and we're going to have a revenue gap that's either going to be filled by other taxes, this hopefully can be one of them, to fund some of the services that we all need and like. So, thanks. So what does that mean exactly? And these are the numbers for what some other towns are currently doing on average. Last year, actually, Billerica was closer to 400,000, whereas in 2023, it was closer to 300, because the operator there had only been open for part of the year. Arlington, 300,000. Woburn is slightly lower in terms of what they bring in, because they allow medical sales. So I'm not sure exactly what percentage of their sales is medical, but the medical sales are not taxed. So if you're just looking at it from a revenue standpoint, it's better, in a way, for the town to just have recreational. Medical patients would still be able to go there and purchase those things. So, next. So we are projecting that a conservative estimate for what the town would receive annually would be about $300,000 or $3 million over 10 years, and that would be equivalent to adding about 25% more revenue to every single bar and restaurant in town. So obviously, that's a pretty significant number. Next. And those were really my main points, I did add a few other slides, this was a 40-slide presentation that I pared down just for the sake of time. But how do we, as Burlington, capture that? And that's through the agreement with the select board, the host community agreement that spells out that we would, as a town, would collect 3% of gross sales. And then above and beyond that, you can add in additional items in there, whether it's additional funds for police patrols or public health programs, things of that nature, to sort of offset any of the potential negative effects. So why Burlington? I think I have already gone over this, but we're foregoing a large revenue source. A lot of towns around us have already done a lot of the legwork and a lot of the learning as far as figuring out how to best do this. And the sales are already happening here, whether it be in Burlington or right next to Burlington, and the other towns collecting the revenue. Or they're happening here illegally. So those are obviously not what we want. So I think the question is not, should it be legal? It's really, should we regulate and tax it? So that's how I'll close. Any questions, I'm happy to answer, would love to hear thoughts, comments.
Okay. Jimmy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I may know, no secret, that I come through this, I look at this from a jaded point of view. 37 years in law enforcement, I've never seen marijuana in a positive light, call that being subjective, call it being jaded, whatever you want to call it, that's just me. So I personally, and as members of board are opposed to it. The prohibition was voted in by town meeting, and the only one that can vote it out is town meeting.
Yep.
So it's up to, this is town meeting's decision, it's not mine. Those are my points of view, my, my thoughts, because of what I've done for 37 years. So. And we've talked about this, you know, I mean, it's, it's hard for me to be in support of this.
Yep.
And I just can't, but that's my thoughts. I know we're not voting on it, and I have my laundry list of the reasons why, but I'm not going to get into it, because that's not what it's here for, what we're discussing. So this is a town meeting question, going to town meeting. We have the jurisdiction of zoning finally, you know, rests. So I'll just leave it at that and let town meeting do what town meeting is supposed to do.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Start with a question, Will, have you seen anything or heard anything of the possibility of increasing what the town's share would be on some of these taxes? It seems really low in comparison to other things. I could be off on that, but have you heard of any possibility of that ever happening?
So I believe that would be a state issue. I actually have been discussing it with some state reps about changing that split, because the state does receive the lion's share of the revenue. I think that the more people who press them on it, the better. I, I agree with you that I think the town should receive more. There are mechanisms, if you allow for social equity licenses, I believe you get 1% more. So that would be one avenue to potentially get a little bit more revenue. I think that the big thing to focus on here is that that 3% is above and beyond what any other business would generate for the town. So if you put a coffee shop in the same location, you're not collecting that 3%. You're just collecting whatever their normal property taxes are, which any business pays or any taxpayer pays. So it's all a net positive, and it's all net of whatever costs there would be to the town. So, sorry, that was a long-winded answer.
No, that's fine. And I'll just, also just add my own thoughts, I go back and forth on this one all the time, and I generally lean in favor of it, I just, if it's in Woburn, and if it's in Billerica, we're not, we're not keeping it out.
Yeah.
So the town might as well, with the uncertain future we have, and the office vacancy rates we have, any little bit is going to help, and why shouldn't we be reaping those benefits that other towns right next door are getting, and we're not keeping it out by saying no in Burlington? So that's all I had, Mr. Chairman. Thanks.
Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for coming in. Well, I did have a question on the numbers that you presented.
Sure.
In terms of the projected 300,000.
Yep.
And the, you know, theoretical 25% increase.
Yeah, so I, yeah.
Did you, did you run that by our economic development office?
So it's all publicly available knowledge. We do about 1.25 million, from what I understand, in the meals tax. So my numbers might have been slightly off, but it was just sorted to make the comparison, right? We're not looking to add 25% more locations here to do this, we're looking to add a maximum of two, potentially. So that was sort of where I was going with that. To give you a little more context on, into what that looks like in terms of traffic, transactions, that would be about 550 people coming in a day across two locations. So for my own knowledge, just to know, what does another business in town do? Pressed Cafe, which I got dinner at, they, they do about 1,500 people a day. So they would do three times what we would have to do to hit that number. So I, again, think that's a conservative estimate, but we want it to be realistic on, on where we were starting from.
Yeah, I think my reason for questioning that is more, I mean, I respect that you've put a lot of work into this.
Yeah.
But I don't know who you are.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know where you're pulling these numbers from, so maybe just a footnote, say, based on analysis, this is how I came up with it.
Yep.
Otherwise, they're just numbers on a screen, and anybody.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was trying to not put too much.
Yeah, no, that's me, you know, just trying to make certain that.
Yeah.
That it's factual.
Yep.
Based on, you know, facts. And then you've mentioned this, but, and, you know, I, I know there's like rules and regulations on, based on how many liquor stores you have.
Yeah.
That's how many dispensaries or retail establishments you could have, and you're saying, as of now, the max would be two in our town?
Yep.
If this theoretically passes?
Correct.
No more than two?
Correct.
Okay. And then also regarding the 3%, is that a tax or 3%?
That's, that's a tax. That's a tax, so that's similar to the meals tax, right? The meals tax, I think, is 1 and 1/4% of what the total bill is. This would be 3% of what the total bill is.
And are there limitations on what that revenue can be spent on?
No, not to my knowledge.
No?
No.
General fund revenue, and just, I think the meals tax is 0.75%, 1%. So three-quarters of 1% is what the meals tax is currently.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Yeah, my feelings, thank you for coming in and for presenting that, I appreciate it, are similar to Mike's, generally don't see why not, is my kind of thing, I'm kind of agnostic, both in terms of whether you personally choose to partake, and in terms of whether we allow it in town, I'm just kind of like, yeah, fine. I don't have super strong feelings, I guess is what I'm trying to say. strong feelings, I guess is what I'm trying to say. You know, those are my personal feelings. As an elected representative of this town, I also have to speak for the constituents in what I'm hearing. And I really appreciate Mr. Hartling coming in tonight because you're literally maybe the first or second person I've heard speak favorably. We have received dozens of emails, phone calls, conversations, at least, I'll speak for myself, because I, at one public meeting, said that I would theoretically be in favor of this. Then I got a lot, a lot of people reaching out. So a lot, the noise in town is that the town does not want this. So whether or not I care or for it or in favor of it, I do hesitate to support something that the town voted against. I know that was like eight, nine years ago, without knowing how they feel now. And what I'm hearing, and maybe this is just a vocal minority, but what we hear is that people don't want it.
So can I respond to that?
Sure.
I think, again, my whole point this time is, it doesn't really matter what I want or what you want or what anybody wants. It's here. And it's legal and it's available and we're not going to change that. All we can change is, are we going to allow it to be done in a controlled, regulated, taxed way? Or do we want everybody to have to just go purchase it illegally even though it's legal? Which I think ultimately is worse for everybody. And that's what I'm hoping to get across as my point. And I think that it's easy to say, hey, we don't want it. We don't want marijuana in town, but that's, doesn't matter. It's still here. If I wanted to, I could grow six plants in my backyard. There's absolutely nothing anybody could do to stop me. So again, that's, that's just my point, is that we're better off controlling it, restricting it, regulating it, than just saying, we're going to bury our head in the sand and pretend it's not here.
Okay. And on that note, I know previous iterations of this proposal sort of had a joint zoning.
Yeah.
Proposal, where it was outlined, potentially where.
Yep.
Now, now your recent, my understanding is that you're not presenting that to town meeting. You're only presenting.
Yeah, so this is just step one in a long, long process so that we can then go back and look at other communities, talk to other communities, see what they've done right, what we don't like, how that will be good for Burlington, bad for Burlington, and then take the best parts and make this the best thing it can possibly be for the town. And so we sort of slowed the process so that we could get input from all the different departments and possibly form a subcommittee or discuss it further to really just figure out what's the best possible way to do this, if town meeting does decide that they want it. Because ultimately, they're the ones who are making the call, I think. And that's why we want to just put this on the floor to see how they feel. Because ultimately, it's, it's up to them.
Okay. And just, sorry, I know I'm taking up a lot of time.
Yeah.
One more question. Without a zoning proposal to go along with it, and let's say theoretically, town meeting decided to rescind this bylaw.
Yep.
Can a dispensary or a retail establishment go anywhere?
Nope.
No.
They can't open up until zoning is approved and in place. So it's really more symbolic than anything.
Okay.
And then you all know that I can, I'm not continuing to waste your time or planning board's time by coming up here and speaking ad nauseam about this. And we can hopefully move forward in a positive direction.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear to anybody who's listening.
Yep.
If it's, you know, if town meeting decides to rescind the bylaw, it's not, they're not just going to pop up overnight. There is more work to do.
Yeah.
So I don't think I have anything else to add. I appreciate all the time you've put into this and wish you the best of luck in town meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Sarah did a really good job of hitting the nail on the head here. You know, Will, a couple, a couple of things, right? I don't think this has anything to do with us burying our heads in the sand.
Okay.
Saying that, you know, it's, it's either this or it's uncontrolled and illegal, right? I think are two ends of the spectrum, right? So I think I would caution us to use as much net neutral language as possible.
Okay.
Right? Because the moment you start trying to fear monger town meeting is the moment that you lose them entirely, right? Like, I think to Sarah's point, there are enough people still on the fence about this.
Yep.
That you'll, you can easily lose a vote, you know, by saying, hey, everybody, it's either this or, you know, we all run amok. Now, I know I'm over-exaggerating what you said, right? But I want you to understand that that's what they'll, that's what they're going to hear.
Yeah.
You've been at this a while. In terms of what you've heard from members at town meeting, what is the overall vibe you're getting from them?
I think a lot of people are in a similar boat to Sarah, which is that she says, hey, I'm fairly neutral on this. I think that there are some positives, possibly some negatives. And let's maybe hear both sides. I think that there are a lot more people who are pro this than anybody wants to give credit because there's a lot of stigma attached to it. And there's a lot of people who don't necessarily want to get up and beat their chest and say, hey, I'm for this. It's a lot easier for people to email you and say, hey, I don't want this, than it is for them to say, hey, I like marijuana and I use it regularly. But if you look at the statistics, one in every two people in Massachusetts has used it in the last year. So statistically speaking, at least 48% are, I would assume, going to be in favor of it. So again, I, that's just based on my anecdotal conversations with people. I think there are quite a few that are open to it, so.
Yeah. I'm just curious, right? Because we're, you know, we're asked to take positions on these things ahead of time. You know, we don't have a temperature of what town meeting is feeling.
Yeah.
To Sarah's point, right? I mean, Chris, I think is probably the third person I've talked to in the last six months that's in favor, right? And, and I'm fairly agnostic as well, right? Like, I don't care what you do with your free time.
Yeah.
You know, and, but, you know, like her, right? I've seen the conversations on Facebook. You know, a handful of folks emailed, right, saying, no, not here, right? Didn't we vote on this eight years ago? We said no. Right? Why is this back? Right? I thought we, we talked about this was the vote.
Yeah.
Right? So from the, the job of representing the community, we have to, you know, understand where everyone's coming from.
Definitely.
In terms of the presentation, and I know this was just a few select slides.
Yep.
Right? But I agree with Sarah. You got to tell folks where you're getting your numbers from, so that they understand contextually. And I would rephrase that 25%, right? It's 25% of the overall collected, not of the, it sounded, what I thought I interpreted as was like from each restaurant.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's not, that's not that. So again, I want to make sure that like, if you're going to go in front of, you know, 126 members of this, this body, that they feel as well informed as humanly possible. I would also include like what those next steps look like, right? Because right now, it's just to take, take away the prohibition.
Yeah.
Right? So what would a prohibition with Burlington look like, right? I think laying that out for them gives everyone the opportunity to go, okay, so from here, this is where we go, right? And it creates a certain roadmap of certainty, rather than whatever one may conjure in one's mind.
Yeah.
Right? I don't know. I, I mean, you know, I'm sure that we'll, we'll talk about it, you know, when we, when we take a stand on it. I'm also agnostic, right? I, I quite frankly don't care, but I want to make sure that, you know, we're representing the community. The, the dollar amount is slightly underwhelming, right? And even though we're on the precipice of watching larger businesses walk away, you know, I don't want town meeting to feel like there's pressure to, to jump at a few dollars right now. You know, so, I mean, with all that aside, I want to thank you. I want to thank Alex for being tenacious. I, I think, I think persistence is the wrong word, you know, but, but being, you know, at the forefront and having these conversations and asking the community to think about it.
Yeah.
You know? Because it would have been really easy to be like, oh, oh, too many roadblocks, right? Let's just walk away. So I appreciate that you're asking us to, to take it under serious consideration and that you're putting information in front of us that we can use to make a good decision. So from, from that perspective, I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Well, you've heard quite a bit, which is what you were here for, to pick everybody's brain a little bit here and there. I think the biggest thing for us is the fact that if we approve this, it's, it's just a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
You still have to go in front of town meeting. No matter what we do, whether we say yes or no, it could still go in front of town meeting. I'll come right out and say it. Good luck.
Okay.
I mean, good luck. I, I don't use it. I don't, if somebody wants to go buy it, that's up to them. That's up to them to decide what they want to watch on TV. And nobody should be able to tell them what they can and can't do. So as far as the town goes, I'll come right out and say it. I'm in favor of it. If somebody wants to go do it and it's going to bring us revenue, I'm all for it. I'm all for it. And if you're against that, then I don't know what to tell you. You know, this, this world was brought up as individuals trying to make a profit and trying to make a living. And I firmly believe in that. And that's why it's called America, would do what we can do. And if that's what you want to do, then go do it. You're not hurting anybody. It's not against the law. If you were breaking the law, it'd be a whole different ballgame to me. If something was, was to happen and the police are down there for a reason, that's what we have the police department for. I don't think this particular marijuana brings any, any bad use in, actually, in my personal opinion, personal opinion. It keeps all the riffraff out. Because now you buy it pure, whatever it is. What's the syllables, T H?
C.
The THC or whatever it is in there, whatever the stuff is for you. It helps people sleep. It helps people with, with anxieties. It helps people with everything it needs. And if that's what you need, then that's what you need. That's just my opinion. So I'll be in favor of this. Will, I think it's a good thing. And if you want to go buy it, go buy it. If you don't want to go buy it, don't buy it.
Yeah.
It's that easy to me.
Yeah.
So I know this is only discussion tonight, but.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rutfield, who's been working with Will on this, has had his hand up in the virtual meeting. I don't know if you want to recognize him.
Sure, go ahead. Yeah, it's only one. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to point out that we appreciate your feedback on all this. I do agree, one of the issues in bringing this forward is that there's a heavy, there does seem to be like a heavy vocal minority opposed. And it's hard to tell if it's a minority or not, because there's also a lot of people who would be, you know, like Mr. Estero and, and others, they, it's kind of a, well, sure, okay, but, you know, people aren't going to go out of their way to make it happen. So it makes it a lot harder to see exactly how in favor the town is right now. So I do appreciate hearing that, hearing your thoughts on it. And I do worry, also worry that some people might be thinking this is kind of a rehash of the 2016 vote, which is now kind of dealing with a small question because, because of the 2016 vote, possession is legal in Burlington for people over 21. So it was a bit of a concern. I did read some of the letters and some of them, not all of them, but some of them did seem to think they were kind of, were rehashing 2016. And, you know, so I just wanted to bring up those two points that like, it's hard, one of the issues is, you know, it's hard to see, it's hard to find many people who are passionately in favor. So you're going to hear from them passionately against, but it's hard to tell if they're actually the significant, the majority of voice or not. That's it for me. And I do apologize for not being there in person. I had some schedule conflicts and I'm still adjusting to the new baby, so.
Don't apologize. That's why we have virtual going on. It works out good. It's all good. Thank you so much. So with that being said, yes.
I just wanted to point out that there's no vote for approval listed on this agenda item, but in our next agenda item, the board will have an opportunity to take a position on any of the warrant articles on the January town meeting, if you choose to.
Okay. All right.
So you can't vote on this agenda item, but if you wanted to vote, you could vote on the next one.
Okay. Fantastic. And like I said earlier, this is, this is, I think it's, honestly, I think it's bigger than the five of us to vote on it. So I kind of agree with it going to town meeting. Let the 126 people make their decision. Have well-doers, his due diligence up there, his, whatever he's got to do. So that's where, that's where I stand on this issue personally. All right?
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
If anybody would like to learn more, we are having info sessions both tomorrow evening and on the 22nd at Grand View, 6:30 PM start time. All right? Thank you all. Have a great night.
You too, as well. Thank you. Okay. January Town Meeting Warrant Article 2025. Mr. Sagrino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an opportunity for the board to take a position as a board on any of the articles that are on our upcoming town meeting. I think you may have already taken a position on Melissa's articles.
So articles two through five, the board has already voted unanimously. And we had asked the board to, if you so choose to take a position on any others, to let us know for this meeting. And that we would be asking for a position to be taken on six articles that were put forward either by the board or through the town administrator's office. So if you don't mind, I could quickly go through those, or at least the financial ones together. And you can stop me if you have any questions.
Sure.
Good. So you did, you should have received some backup copies of the warrant articles and backup from me. And hopefully had a chance to review those, but I'll go over them really quickly. For the, for the six financial articles, five of them, the board would typically take a position on. The first one being Article 11, which is a little bit different. It's to authorize a five-year contract for our, for our techni, technology and cybersecurity infrastructure refresh. This is something that this board and town meeting have done several times, each of the past five-year increments. I think this is our fourth time doing it. The reason we have to do it is because our Chapter 30B, Section 12, only allows for a town to enter into a contract of up to 36 months, up to three years. Anything over that needs town meeting approval to go up to five years. And what we've traditionally done is come back with our technology refresh package and ask for the budget to be approved and for the approval to go more than five years. However, if we wait and it doesn't get approved for whatever reason, we're, we're sunk for a little bit of time. So we're asking for this in January, only the approval and not the actual program that will come back when we bring the budget back in May. So it's a little bit different. It's just the approval of the five years. It's for our technology, hardware and cybersecurity, software and hardware refresh. This is things like the APs, the switches, the phones, all the telephony equipment throughout the whole town. This is both school and town side. And like I said, it happens every five years. Following one, Article 12, is an annual article that you're used to seeing. This is to transfer from free cash to water, water stabilization fund. This is one you, you see in January for, this is the seventh or eighth time this has happened. You may remember that this is the mechanism for us to capture the additional revenues created when we, when we move forward to join the MWRA. A plan was put in place to increase the rates a little bit a year over a certain amount of time. When you do that, if the bill, if the revenues and expenses don't match perfectly and the money goes into the general fund like the rest of our revenues, then we wouldn't, they wouldn't match up. We wouldn't have the money to pay the bills. This offers us a mechanism to capture those additional revenues. They certify as free cash. Once free cash is certified with the state, we transfer into this water stabilization fund. And then I'll be back here in May talking about the water stabilization fund again. This will be us transferring it out of the water stabilization fund into the operating budget to cover the bills. Good news is, a couple of years from now, we won't be talking about it anymore. We'll have all of the expenses and we, that we'll have borrowed all of the money for the MWRA connection. And we will just have to explain that we now have, we're adding this to revenues and we're adding this to expenses. And we won't have to do this back and forth twice a year. The next one, Article 13, is, again, is an annual article that we do in January each year. This is to add some money to our reserve fund, the Ways and Means Reserve Fund. Typically, that has, or I don't even know for how long, probably since before Paul was working here. We had originally budgeted for $200,000 so that we had a little pocket of money should something go wrong. budgeted for $200,000 so that we had a little pocket of money, should something go wrong, that someone could go to Ways and Means and ask for a reserve fund transfer. While we wait for free cash to be certified, once that happens, we come back in January, we ask to add a little bit more money to it, and also to replenish anything we've spent out of it. We've been lucky enough, the past few years, we haven't spent any money. Last time was four years ago, we had to do some HVAC mechanical work that we needed the money before May Town Meeting to do it, so we were able to do a reserve fund transfer and then replenished that money. Next one, Article 14, again, as I can hear him say, this is an annual article. This is the Transportation Network Infrastructure Fund, so that's a fancy way of saying the fee we get for ride share. So this is Lyft, or Uber, or any ride that originates in Burlington. There's a fee on all the rides, it's 20 cents, the state gets 10, the originating town gets 10. As you can see, the amount was 34,000, almost $35,000. That means we had almost 350,000 rides originate in Burlington, and this is for calendar 33, 23. The way this works is the state takes the data for a calendar year. Throughout the spring, they true it up and decide how much they owe each city and town, and they send you that money at some point over the summer, and then it's up to the town. That money is collected and it goes in what's called their receipts reserve. You can't just, if you don't bring it in as general fund, you put it in, you have to go and then appropriate it, because it's very specific what you can use it for. You can, what we have used it for the last few years is to offset the costs of our ride share program, our senior ride share program. That is what replaced what used to be called the minibus or B line. So since we're getting the tax from that, it makes sense to create a little cottage industry for ourselves. So just to put that in perspective, the state's rides in 18 and 19 going into COVID were 81 million rides, 91 million rides. Plummeted during COVID for obvious reasons. In calendar 22, they were back up to 60 million, and then last year, almost 80 million. So 30% gain in that one year and heading back to where they used to be. Probably everybody here has taken a ride share in the past. So this is a way for us to capture that money and use it on is to help offset the costs of that ride share program. The next one is 16, and this is a little bit different, not an annual one. This is something a little different, and typically you would hear from us about this in May. This is, we're proposing to use some free cash. Free cash was certified this past fall at $36 million, right in the area of what we were hoping. The last few years, we've made a conscious effort to hold on to a little bit extra, or not spend, not appropriate, a little bit of free cash at the end of the year to sort of bank it going into the next year, knowing that we had both the police station and Fox Hill coming up, and that we may want to do something to offset those costs. And we do that traditionally at May Town Meeting. Every year, we come and say, let's use some free cash instead of borrowing some money. The reason we're doing it in January is because for these four projects that I have listed there, we would need to borrow some money before June 30th for those projects, because we will have expenses in all of those projects during this fiscal year, and you can't close the fiscal year with a deficit in any of those funds. Our borrowing, the way it works, is in April. That's how our schedule works. So we're here in January to say, we would, you know, these are things we would typically be coming to you in May, but we're here a little early saying, we're proposing to use some money. And where did these numbers come from? The four projects that you see there, the road paving, the Fox Hill, the police station, and the recreation, land, water, conservation project at Overlook, were all approved over the last year, and will all have spending this year. The Fox Hill and Police Station, where did we get that number? That's what we would have had to borrow this year to cover the costs that we're going to have this year on those projects. So that maybe isn't the final number for that, for those projects, certainly. But just a little bit of perspective on that. Every million dollars we don't borrow saves $71,000 in the operating budget. So for, so for the 10 million that we're not going to borrow if this were to pass, for those two projects, the Police Station and the Fox Hill, that's, you know, 710,000 annually that won't be in our operating budget, and then over the life of the loan, we're talking about over $7 million, we're going to save in interest on that money. So... And that's the last one for the financial. Do you want me to just talk about the general one real quick and finish them up, or do you want to do this financial? Yes. General one is a little bit funny. As you all know, our extraordinary annual control officer retired this year, and a new one was hired. And after hiring, we were looking through some stuff in the bylaws, and we noticed that one of the bylaws was quite outdated. It was written before I was born, it was approved before I was born, I should say, and hasn't, we haven't been following it for 30-plus years. It said that the animal control canine department was to be a principal department of the town, a separate department of the town. Well, for as long as anybody can remember, the animal control and the canine department has been a function of the police department for at least 30-something years. So we took this opportunity to update this bylaw. If for some reason this didn't pass, the option is we just would approve, we would just make a designation that the chief or a police officer that lives in town were the animal control officer registered with the state. Wouldn't change anything with our actual union position of an animal control officer. So the two changes are to be a resident of the town, which we're trying to get away from when we can, just to be able to increase the pool of applicants, and a lot of these jobs have special educations and trainings, and also to just memorialize or codify how we already do it, that it operates as a service of the police department. So I know I went kind of fast, so I'm happy to, oh, and one more point was that free cash was certified as just over $36 million in the fall. This, these total 16,667,000, so we would be carrying about 20 million into May Town Meeting of free cash.
All right, Nick.
A couple things. 15, tax abatement. We don't typically take a position on that?
It's an assesses article, but you're welcome to take a position on any of them.
Okay.
So choose.
Yeah, I couldn't remember if we had in the past or not.
It hasn't come up in a while. It's, it's, the last town meeting provided them with some funding to defend the town's values.
Yeah.
And from time to time. So it's not an annual, it's not a semi-annual, it's more like a, maybe every three to five. I don't recall the last time.
Yeah.
We took that one up.
Okay. And then I was curious to get the board's thoughts on Articles 6 through 9 in terms of, you know, the signage, the overlay, middle housing, and the ADU stuff? I don't know if we want to discuss that in terms of like...
Can we vote signage?
Let's go through what he discussed first, and then we'll go back to the...
Okay, so in regards to everything that you brought up, my only question was, on Article 11, has it always been tech cybersecurity infrastructure when we talk about the overall contract, or has it expanded to cover cybersecurity as well?
The last, the last time we did a five-year, we included cybersecurity also.
Okay.
So at that point, we increased the annual operating budget amount and looped in, you know, close to a million dollars worth of cybersecurity type of stuff.
Okay. My, I guess my only ask here is, and I don't know if everyone is down, like, I would love a download on like, how things have been going. You know, if it is from you guys, or we have, you know, Jose and Joe, maybe someone from ISAC come in, I don't know if the whole board wants it, it would need to be executive session, all that fun stuff, but I'd love to like, understand where we're at with that. I'm obviously in favor of it, and I think that we've been doing great work over the last few years. But, you know, I feel like it could easily become a black hole in our minds.
I think, I think we make a conscious effort to not talk about cybersecurity in public meetings quite often. It sounds kind of funny, but we don't want to put a target on ourselves or give away the good-worth that we're doing.
Yeah.
So...
Okay. That's all, Mr. Chairman, with regards to that. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not the specific, well, this is a general statement. You want to stick to the financial only right now?
What he went over, first of all.
Okay, I'll wait till, nothing on what he asked.
Okay. Mike?
No comments on what Mr. Nizio presented.
Okay, Sarah?
Just one question on the animal control officer. Does the select board shall annually appoint an animal control officer?
So that's a technical thing that we have to report to the state, who is our designated annual animal control officer, and it's something we, I think we have to do it in the spring, you may remember. Yeah. So it has been handled, and we've had the same person for quite some time, but we do want to take that out of the, out of the bylaw, because you have to do it.
It's required by the state.
Yeah.
Okay, that was my question. And then for the free cash, the big one, for Overlook Park, 1.3 million, and the whole project is 2.3, but they're getting a $1 million grant. So that's basically the whole project.
Correct.
Okay.
So it would be that we weren't, wouldn't have to borrow any money for that project.
Okay. That's all my question.
I wasn't sure if that info was still embargoed, so I didn't say anything.
I think it's well known. Now, I think, I think it's, they got the grant, right?
It is, yes.
Yeah. That's all, thank you.
Go ahead, Jim, because...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we've done in the past, this is the index of articles going, presented for town meeting. Although I've spoken out as a person, personally, about Article 17, not in favor of it personally, these are, this is town meeting's arena. So I will be supporting to put these on warrant for our town meeting, because that's where they should be. So even though I'm opposed to one or two of them, not my decision to make. I'm giving it to the board that does cover the warrant articles. So I'll be voting to support all of these to get them to town meeting. Personally, I don't agree with the two of them, but it's not my decision, it's town meetings. I just wanted to make that clear before we vote on anything.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just clear something up. I might, maybe didn't do a great job explaining it. Jim, the warrant article, the list of, index of articles has been approved by this board and is going to town meeting.
Okay.
What we were talking about tonight was, does the board want to take a position in favor, against, or whatever on any of these articles?
All right, then.
I probably left them.
All right. Then I'm all set, and I'm in full support of the articles that Mr. Nizio mentioned.
Nick?
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of big stuff on here. And I just didn't know if members of the board wanted to briefly discuss and take a position on some of this big stuff. You know, I mean, we're looking at a heavy sign regulation adjustment with the districts that Sally and Betsy have brought forward to us for the holidays. You know, this middle housing overlay district, which, you know, in conjunction with the ADUs, you know, can drastically shift, you know, how we see density across the community. I just wanted to open it for discussion, one way or the other. I just feel like, you know, we, we do a good job of staying in our lane, quote unquote, but I also want to make sure that we're having the bigger discussions, because, you know, I mean, people look to us for, you know, general guidance and our opinions of what we're hearing from the community, and I want to make sure that we're, we're sharing this back with town meeting, you know, and they feel as though we're, you know, kicking the tires, as it were, before it gets to them. So just something to open for discussion.
Any comments on that from anybody?
I have a comment. In terms of, I mean, we heard a good amount on the signage. I think I would feel okay having a position on that. In terms of the middle housing and the ADU, the planning board has done a ton of work with those, and, you know, I'm paying attention to it, but I don't feel like I have enough information to have a position either way. That's, those are my thoughts on that.
Okay, all right. Mike, anything?
I'm open to the, what the board wants to do. I'm good either way.
Jimmy?
I'm in line with what Sarah said. Those, not that they're not our issues, but they're better educated, more familiar with that type of article, so I'm willing to defer to them on what their recommendations are, because it's zoning, and zoning falls under town meeting and planning. And I don't, I don't feel like taking a position on them, because they're not, like Sarah said, don't know enough about them. It's, those are, it falls under other boards, is what I'm trying to say.
I think I agree with what Nick says, as far as the people looking up, looking at us for direction sometimes, but on the other side of it, you two have made great points on the fact that we definitely stay in our lane a lot of times, and let the boards, that's what they got voted in for, that's what they're there to do. So just let them do their thing and go from that point on. That's my opinion. I do have a question for the board. Do we want to take a stance on Article 17? Is that something that we want to take a stance on? To go to town meeting. We're not taking a stance on it as far as what you agree with or what you disagree with, but do we want to have a vote on?
No, it's already going.
You did, you already voted it.
It's already going.
Stance is if you agree or not.
Okay, all right, just making sure about that.
It's a hard one, right? I mean, I think, you know, we've all kind of voiced that, you know, and Jim, I mean, you know, I think from your seat, it's, I think it's just life experience.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, you know, serving on the force shows you a completely different perspective on these things. And, you know, I've had the conversation with other officers who feel similarly. You know, look, I don't want to, but I think that the board should, if that helps clarify anything. You know, I think that we should, because this is a really big thing. But I personally would like to avoid it, if I'm being totally honest, right? I mean, it's a, it's, I think it's a did if you do, did if you don't scenario, you know? And that ultimately, town meeting will decide, but again, I think that town meetings will look and say, well, select board, what did you guys say? We're going to say, ah, we didn't.
This one, it's so hard to get a feel for how the town feels. I really wish there was a town-wide referendum on it, because, you know, I'm agnostic on it either way. I can see both sides. I don't feel really strongly either way, but I wish I had a better grasp. I know, I know what the naysayers think. You know who those people are, and you've heard, we've heard from them, but I wish we had a way to get a better pulse of the community's thoughts. It's been a long time since 2016. I think a lot of the stigma has been removed, but again, I don't, I don't have, I don't feel like I have a firm grasp on what the, how the town feels on it, and I wish we had that.
I have a thought on that.
Sure.
We have until January 31st to put something on the April ballot. If we, as a select board, wanted to put a ballot question on April, I know that's not the same, because it was a presidential the last time they voted, but at least it's a data point. That's just a thought.
We absolutely could. Do you feel like it's too little, too late if town meeting's voting in January? Or could we say that that's what we're going to consider, and we'd be asking town meeting to postpone this until we get that data?
I'm lost. So I'm totally lost. I've been trying to follow along, and I'm like, wait a minute, what are we going to propose, or what are we not proposing, or what are we doing? Somebody help me out here.
So for April 5th, there's a town election.
Yes.
We, as a select board, can put a ballot question.
Yes.
On the ballot. We have a deadline for that.
What's the question you want to put on there? That's what I...
Well, I'd have to...
Are you in favor of...
We'd have to figure out how to work on marijuana.
Not even word it. What is roughly the idea?
Rescinding, rescinding the prohibition on retail marijuana in Burlington.
Right. Okay. So if we were in favor of that, my question then was, do we ask town meeting to postpone Article 17? Like, our vote would be, listen, like, we're really unsure, and we've discussed it as a board, we're asking you to postpone this until we get the data, and then... the board, we're asking you to postpone this until we get the data, and then you guys can take it up in nay. They could vote on it now.
Yeah.
That's obviously...
Present it. That's our position.
That's our position, is that we're really unsure, and so we're going to put it to the community, which I don't, I don't hate.
I don't hate that idea either. I love it.
It's a non-binding...
Right.
You can do that with every article in there if you wanted to.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, I mean...
We could, but I mean, to Sarah's point, this is...
This thing, I'd rather just get it over with. This thing's been kicked down the, kicked on the road since 2019. I'd rather just get it over with. It's been kicked on the road for a thousand times. I'd rather just get it over with.
I think town meeting feels the same way we feel. I think there are a lot of folks who are like, I don't, I mean, yeah, sure, I guess, right? But I mean, if we had the vote of the community, at least at that point, they could weigh that data point, that current data point. They wouldn't be looking at 2016's data, right, which is nearly 10 years old, to say, okay, well, we just took a vote in '25, and here's what the, here's what the community said. And the hope, I guess, too, to add on that, is that in our last town election, we had, what, 20% turnout? It's the highest in over a decade. Having 20% of the community vote on it would be...
Do you think that was a phobia? Think it's going to happen every year?
I hope it stays that strong. I, you know, I mean, we've been, we've been crying into the, into the wind for, you know, to go from 12 to 20.
Mr. Chairman, a quick question. What if town meeting chooses not to postpone?
Then they can take a vote?
I don't know. I'm not, I'm not...
Yeah, and then it's on the ballot, and then...
Well, no, we would just, if we, we wouldn't vote to put it on the ballot, oh, we'd have to vote by the 27th.
Sag, any help with this?
Other question.
Excuse me. Wait a minute.
I guess I would just say that, as was pointed out this evening, even if town meeting votes in favor of this, it doesn't, there's no place to allow for within the zoning. So the ballot question could still be useful if anybody had any doubts in determining whether or not the zoning could, should ultimately go through. We can check with Amy tomorrow about the ballot question. I'd be really happy to do that. Get back to the board. We still have the January 27th meeting, and we can also organize a quick, you know, virtual select board meeting to handle this as well sooner than that, if that's necessary.
Yes, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question for all. Logistically, is it a big pain to put a ballot question on the...
I mean, we have one.
The ballot?
Being prepared now. Requires the ballot question, then require a pros and cons statement similar to the red book we get from the state.
I'll point it to them.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't necessarily believe that it's unfeasible to do that. I remember when I said earlier that Amy will yell at me. She may yell at us about it, but she'll apologize the next day, so.
And from this board, it just needs a majority for it to be put on the ballot?
I'd have to check up on that. That's my first request in the middle of the meeting on this, so. Like I say, my suggestion would be if the board wants to go in that direction, that we maybe organize a quick meeting to accomplish that sooner than January 27th.
Why not January 27?
It may just leave a short timeline to put everything together.
Let's get back to those articles that Mr. D'Nizio talked about, if we want to approve that, and then we'll go back to this question. Okay? Sure. At least we'll get that. January 10 warrant article 2025. Is everybody okay with what he went over? Without question, number seven ballot...
11 through 16?
So 11 through 14 and 16?
And 18.
And 18. And that was it?
Yeah.
It was okay? Make a motion?
Make a motion to...
Recommend favorably?
Recommend favorably for financial articles 11, 12, 13, 14, and 16, and general bylaw article 18.
Second.
Who's who made the second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. As far as Article 17 goes, I think what we should do with that one is everyone gather their thoughts together, put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and we still have time to do it. That's what I think, because we could sit here all day long and discuss this back and forth. Not that I have any place to go except for dinner, but other than that...
Mr. Chairman, do we, I can see Paul furrowing his brow. So I was just going to say, do we want to at least direct staff to start the exploratory nature?
We'll do that anyway. I was just going to suggest to the board, if you can reach out to Lynn with some dates, we obviously need 48 hours to post a meeting. Again, it could be, it doesn't have to be in the evening, it could be a morning meeting. We just need to make sure that everybody's aware that we're having a meeting. It can be 100% virtual, just to make it easier for everybody to jump on for a quick meeting, and, you know, we could spend, get Amy at the meeting and spend half an hour and just try to put it all together correctly. If the board can just reach out to Lynn with some of your availability, the end of this week and the beginning of next week, I would say. We do have Monday holiday.
Okay. Everyone okay with that? Okay. Moving along. Approval, updates on personnel rules and regulations.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes, what I missed.
Sorry. Did we want, did you want to propose a vote on any of those articles? Or are we, like, okay with not?
If, if folks are, I mean, I'm okay with not voting on, like, eight and nine, because you don't really have a lot of info to go on. But I mean, if you guys wanted to do six and seven, I mean, I'm open to it. I didn't get the vibe that people were for it.
I would just suggest to the board that assigned bylaw improvements are long overdue. It's one of the most frequently complained about things that we hear from people trying to locate a business in town. The committee's really done a ton of work on it, and I know that they would appreciate your support. Anybody that's been on the ZBA, like many of you have, understand problems with assigned bylaw, and I think it's a great initiative that they've taken on, and, you know, they've put forth a tremendous effort to bring this to town meeting, so that's my, that's my thoughts on that one. They weren't here for a presentation, so everybody was able to sort of see that one.
Can I make a comment just as a data point? CBA voted zero to five on that, on the sign bylaws.
Glad you said it, because I was going to. They didn't feel like they were involved. That was their problem.
I think they felt like it was, there's already an overlay on the town center, and it could have been more integrated more into that, more red tape.
Yeah. There was quite a bit going on in that one. Did you watch it?
Yeah.
Yeah, me too. Okay. Yeah, it was quite interesting. Mr. Wishers?
We can hold and talk while the 27 people want, at any sort of time.
Okay.
If anybody wants to go back and watch that meeting, maybe get more information from that. I mean, we saw the presentation, and maybe. I was actually planning on reaching out to the chair just to get more information and clarity, because I kind of thought it was a no-brainer, and then I saw that vote, and I was like, oh. So I would like to get more information from that.
Okay. So we'll table that one until next time. Everyone all set to move along to the updates of rules and regulations?
Yep.
Yep? Who's that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you've all had a chance to take a peek at the Personnel Rules and Regulations document. It is basically our, sort of our de facto employee handbook. We have a bunch of policies and procedures and whatnot for our employees, and from time to time, we need to update that. It's a long, about 40-page document, but hopefully the color coding of the backup helped, and the memo from Joanne of the things that have changed over the last year or so that we need to update in that document. You just, aren't some of them housekeeping things, some of them are based on the administrative and professional compensation restructure we did, created the need to then update some language there. Some of them were recommended by our labor attorney, that we were just sort of maybe not out of compliance, but could tighten that up. And like I said, some are housekeeping that. It's just eliminating any sections that just don't apply anymore because it was for a benefit or a policy that applied to someone that had been hired before a certain date, and we just don't have that anymore. So happy to talk about any of them specifically, if you have any questions, but Joanne's memo was pretty detailed, and it was pretty easy to follow in that big 40-page doc.
Mike, anything on that?
No comment, Mr. Sarah?
No, I just want to express my thanks to Joanne and the HR team for all the work on this. It's not the funnest part of their job, so I appreciate them taking the time for this. That's all.
Yeah, no, nothing. I thought everything was updated well, so no comments.
Okay. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I think it was laid out very well, like, a different color links to show what the changes were, the deletions were, so I'm good with it.
Okay. I have nothing, so on that, I'll take a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the updates to Personnel Rules and Regulations.
Second.
Who's who made the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Okay. Paul, can we take the minutes as one, or should we do each one individual?
If you wish, Mr. Chairman.
If I wish? Let's see, let me think about this. I would like to make a motion on 11-4, 11-18, and 12-13, 24.
And strategic planning, 10-29, 24. Make a motion to approve all of those minutes for all those dates.
Motion made?
Second.
Seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Strategic planning meeting, 10-29 of 24. Would somebody like to make a motion on that?
I added it to the motion.
Oh, you added it?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Let's go with subcommittees. Sarah?
So Wednesday is the Civic Expo, Wednesday, January 15th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the high school cafeteria. Is that right?
Yes.
Change of venue this year. It's a free event. Anybody can go to learn about how our town government works, meet elected officials. Will mostly all be there in some capacity between the hours of 5:00 and 7:00. This was a big hit last year, which is why it's been moved to a bigger facility. So thank you to Nikki Cadillac at the Burlington Buzz for all her work on that. And then I'll just add that Monday, the 20th, is Martin Luther King Day, so schools and town offices are closed. That's all. Thanks.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A little late, but last Thursday, January 9th, was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and I just want to extend my thanks to the police department and everything they do for us in the town. It doesn't go unnoticed or underappreciated, probably goes unmentioned a lot, but a belated thank you to them and for National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Nick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hope everybody is having a great start to their 2025. Can't believe it's 2025. I'm going to start this now, that way there's plenty of time to talk about it. People Helping People is having their 12th Annual Wine Tasting and Charity Auction, is being held Sunday, February 23rd, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Cafe Escadrill, so you can go online, go on Facebook, and get involved. It's a great way to help support People Helping People. I've been there a couple times before and always enjoyed it.
It's not your message, it's too late.
All right. Bye.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
I'm not even going to get into it with what that was. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fire department for the month of December, they had a total of 463 incidents. 305 of those were from medical aid. They had three major incidents. They had a fire at 15 Blue Sky Drive where some power cords were arcing and caught cardboard on fire in the lab. They were able to extinguish it, drive chemicals and fire extinguishers. Their second fire that they had was a 271 chemistry. It was a fire in commercial cooking equipment. They were able to get it, investigate it, extinguish it, and they also notified the Board of Health because it's a food establishment. And unfortunately, we had a fatal house fire in Burlington on Evelyn Road, which is still under investigation at this time.
Thank you very much. Chairman's report, there's not much going on. You guys do a great job with all your other stuff, so the hunting season is over. You don't have to hear me talk about it for another 11 months. Nine months, actually. So we'll go with that. Everything else is going well, I'd say. Happy New Year. Hope everyone had a great holiday season. Mr. Sagorino, anything to report?
I have nothing further to say, Mr. Chairman.
On that note, I will take a motion to say goodnight.
Looks to you, Chairman.
Second.
Motion made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.